Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the March 7th work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have two items on the agenda this evening, and we also have a special meeting following the work session. So first up on the agenda is a public hearing on election redistricting. And at this time, I'll call on John O'Brien, Assistant Director, Department of Information Services, GIS Administration, to give us a presentation on the redistricting, and then we'll get into the public hearing. John?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for having me here today. After the 2020 census was conducted, we were tasked with analyzing our current districts, and then based upon the results of the 2020 district, seeing if indeed redistricting was necessary. We found that it was, and we straightforward population analysis against districts and then broke them up. And we looked at the state guidelines and the National Conference of State Legislature guidelines, and the ones we went with proportionality, and that was a plus or minus 5% deviation against the total population of each district. The compactness of each district, meaning it couldn't, you know, clean as possible, contiguous, so no district was, had a contiguous landmass geographically. It wasn't broken up. And then we preserved political subdivisions, meaning we didn't want to kick any of the current district members, district representatives, out of their districts. So with those in mind, and then based upon, previously, we, the city of Salisbury was under a charter or under, what word am I?
Consent decree?
Consent decree for specifically minority districts. Our understanding is that has passed. But however, just based again on the fact of the Salisbury is a minority-majority city, the districts did actually break out instead of two to be three minority districts. So even if we were under the consent decree, that is being met under these redistricting guidelines. So I believe this first slide up is our current council district. As you can see, especially in District 2, it's... So, and obviously, you know, it's, it doesn't meet the guidelines for really either compactness or contiguity. Now, under the proposed, on the next slide should be the proposed district. And again, all the council members remain within their districts, and the districts take on a much more compact and contiguous formation, and they also allow for growth. The only one is really District 4, but even it allows for growth through annexation on the east side, the southeast side of the city. But the other districts are, you know, are there, they're ready for, as we annex out, as the city grows, those annexations will slide easily into those districts. The next slide, I believe, is the one that shows the actual... This is a comparison of total population, both the current on top and the proposed. See, that population base is leveled off, and it meets the plus-minus 5% deviation in total population. The next slide...
Sure, yeah.
I'm curious about that last chart.
Yes.
Not that one. Oh, Andy's not in the room.
He's listening.
Oh, he's listening, okay. In 2010, were those populations closer across the five districts? You know, it looks like the 2020 current in the districts, there's a pretty wild difference between, you know, Districts 2 and 3. Obviously, in the proposed, you've leveled it across. I'm just curious if that's, if growth caused that, or if...
Mr. Mayor, I was not here in 2010. This was, this was done by, on the county side of the aisle here. So I really can't speak to that. I don't see where our growth would have actually created this big a disparity under, you know, looking at our total population. So I don't have a good answer for you.
When this, the current one was done, it was done in, what, 2014?
Adopted in 14.
Four years after the census. So then, since then, we've had a lot of growth along Beacon Park Drive.
That'd be five.
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 And then there's been some other stuff, I think, in some of the other areas.
Yeah, like by West Road since 2014, yeah. Yeah, I was just curious.
I mean, to me, that's...
It just seemed so far off back then.
What has been annexed other than, well, I guess there isn't a whole bunch of areas.
Little bit. Little bit, yeah, that's what I was saying.
There has been, there's a lot of homes out there now.
And then, and then four, the north end, I mean, there's been a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, the north end, when you look at the...
The north end of what?
Salisbury.
Salisbury.
Where are homes at out there?
Behind the mall.
Behind Target.
Is that where District 1 is?
No, no, four.
That's four.
We were saying four.
Right now, but proposed it would be.
Proposed it would be one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's back behind the Target and all that. They're doing a lot of growth.
And it's also worth noting that the here is home numbers, which are not finalized and will have soon. It's a lot of growth.
That is a lot.
And we will, we can also map all that out, I'm sure, you know, in John's spare time.
From there, you won't be changing again.
Usually, I say that if you're not in the room. Oh, we can map that.
We can't, we can't, by what proposed.
By what proposed, right.
We have to go by what has been sent.
Next cycle, we'll have to do it.
That's what I'm...
2030.
2030.
2030, we'll have to do it again.
It's going to be very different come 2030.
But it'd be good to see it, just to visualize it and know.
Get an idea.
You have to.
You know, toward the end of this summer, we can take a look at that based on assigned residence.
We are under order.
And do a, just an assumption of, which I hate to make sense, but you can do a sign of population basis, assign to those residents, especially the residential addresses, and then take a look at how that breaks out for district growth. So that potential, we could do, I would say toward the end, I would wait toward the end of the summer, when a lot of that building boom and assigning the address permits have been pulled and stuff like that.
See how many shovels are in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't end up like with a situation with Adalat Farms, where years ago, that was planned, a lot was assigned to it, so a lot of assumptions were made, and then that never occurred because of the crash. So I think, you know, I have a little more warm and fuzzy doing an analysis on physical... Yeah, it's there, it's growing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. If we move on to the next slide. This is a comparison of residential addresses by current and proposed districts. And as you can see, again, the analysis wasn't done on with this in consideration. This is a byproduct of a straightforward population analysis, and it does, while, you know, District 4 is a little lean, but it does level off the residential address points within the districts quite nicely.
So, John, I'm sorry, one more question. That kind of shows us that the, the number of, average number of persons per household or per residential unit in District 4 is higher than in the other districts.
Well, you got to remember, you, District 4 and the proposed District 4, you lose the north end, and that's why they're taking a hit. Because the old population, the old group, didn't consider the growth, the old district didn't consider the growth of the new condos, apartments, and all that. And in the proposed district, District 4 no longer goes north. That now becomes District 1. So District 4 encompasses primarily, you know, the downtown, Tony Tank, that area down in there. But it has a potential because of, you know, and this would be a council decision on what district to assign it to, but as, as we fill the donut holes, that is all residential, the donut holes. So that could either go either District 4 or District 5 to bump those numbers. This is the racial demographics by current and proposed. Again, we had two decidedly minority-majority districts. That was Districts 1 and Districts 2. But then you can see in the proposed, and again, this is, we didn't, we didn't go after specifically saying we have to create minority-majority districts. Again, this is based, simply based on a straightforward population drive analysis, and we end up with District 1 and District 2 remain minority-majority, and District 4 becomes, not by much, but it does become a minority-majority district. This one was just kind of a neat slide we threw in there. This is adjusted property values. We did do, after we did the analysis, we went back and we looked at tax assessment on the current and on the proposed. And as you see, the proposed districts do level off the tax assessed value within the districts. It goes a long way toward leveling that off. So apples to apples, then apples to pineapples under the old districts. This one is a registered voter. Under the old districts, District 5 definitely had a advantage on registered voters and on the 18 and over population group in total. Again, under this current, that levels those off really nicely, and especially in the 18-plus category. Registered voters, again, District 2, unfortunately, on the district, well, the District 2, you're dealing with commercial properties, a lot of commercial properties in that, in that district, so nobody's going to register down there. But the growth potential, the growth potential for residential is there. So everybody else levels. That is, oh, this is a student population base. And again, we didn't go after this in our analysis. This is just showing you what it would look like, what it looks like under the current districts and what it would look like under the proposed. That ends my presentation, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, John. Questions, any more comments from the administration? Any questions from council? Mr. Boda?
Can I, can I just say, I just want to say thank you to John and your team for putting this together and for all the work that went into, you know, not just seeing it as an exercise to, you know, slightly amend, but rather to get it right, and I know that took some work, so thank you.
I would have to thank your office, Mr. Mayor, and the council for allowing us to do this analysis, and allowing us to do it the way it's supposed to be done.
Isn't it amazing when we stay out of it?
Yes.
We stay out of it, how you come up with the right, the right answer.
Nobody can take a look at this, you know, and I know, you know, the charges are all over, chairing meandering. No one can really say there was any political access ground, any germinator in this. This is a straightforward analysis as you get.
That should be done.
I have to admit, though, you know, there was a period of time, it was a couple weeks, maybe, where I was like, well, you know, we'll have on the schedule, like, administration review, and they sent, you know, they sent it to us. We never looked at, you know, it kind of sat on the desk, and it was like, sure, it's there. We can't do a better job than the facts, you know, the analysis, so what else is there to do?
That's good.
You know, just leave it to the, leave it to the facts to be what they are and...
I wonder if they're watching in Annapolis and...
No comment.
That's okay, sorry about that.
No comment.
No comment. No comment. Thanks again, John, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
At this point, I'm going to ask if there's anyone online or that's here would like to speak. Because you have to be sworn in. Nothing, nobody online? Okay. Well, I'll call for a, I will now open the public hearing, let me do that, and ask the question, is there anybody that wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And the charter amendment will be voted, first of all, we have consensus from the council to move it forward. And the charter amendment will be voted on, and a public hearing will be held on April 25th, 2022. Again, that hearing and the vote will be on April 25th, 2022. Is that a special day?
Tourist, yeah, it's not Aries, right? Did you ever hear? Yeah, I did. I'm Aries.
These are really effective.
Oh, you have the, that was by request, that was a player. We should take turns.
The rest of them are allowed enough to pick up whatever you say. The rest of them are allowed enough to pick up what you say, so.
Now, we'll, we'll start after next month. We'll start sharing, but, and she'll forget by then, so we'll be all right. Okay. Next up is an ordinance to establish a local abatement fund. Finance Director Keith Cordrey.
Keith is on Zoom with us.
Zoom? He's zooming? Oh, I see him.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Keith.
So we have an ordinance to establish a special revenue fund. It came to the attention of our legal team that the city may be eligible for proceeds from a national settlement agreement arising from lawsuits filed with three major opioid distributors. So those, those proceeds will come with strings attached. We'll have to follow the guidance in the agreements that we execute. So it's important that we establish a fund to deposit the proceeds and account for those, those disbursements separately from the rest of the city's activity. So that is what this ordinance is for, is to establish a special revenue fund to be known as the OSP fund for the purposes of accounting for the opioid settlement proceeds received from the state of Maryland.
Thank you, Keith. Questions from the council? Mr. Boda?
No question.
All right. Do we have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Okay, we have consensus to move forward, Mrs. Nichols. And thank you, council, for keeping us abreast of that.
You're welcome.
Okay, that takes care of the items on the work session. At this point, before we go into the special meeting, I'll call for remarks from the administration or...
Remarks from the administration? Thank you. Sorry, the administration was whispering. So thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I do want to point out that, you know, I was here in 2014 on the council when we last redistricted. It was a painful, political-charged process. It had probably been going on for years. Kim knows all the ins and outs, I'm sure. But it's nice to hear a, you know, de-politicized process. I also think it's, it's worth pointing out that, as John O'Brien mentioned, as a minority-majority city, we now have a majority of our districts that are majority non-white. So I think that's a testament to ensuring that we have a system that reflects the diversity of our community. So that's great. I also want to point out that I know we've got a proclamation Monday, which won't be delivered here, but it'll be delivered elsewhere, but for International Women's Day, and, which is actually tomorrow. So encourage you to thank the women in your life for all they do. Speaking of which, thank, thank you to those in the room.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, Mr. Boda?
We'll be back in person again for round two, final round.
Certainly hope so.
And just happy to see everybody and be here and walk around downtown a little bit, visit with some people before coming in. That's all I got.
Thank you. April?
Just stay safe. Be blessed, and it is good to be back around.
We got you.
It is good to be back around the council members and the administration. It's really good, it feels good. Just hope we remain safe, that's all. Just stay safe. Stay the day.
Thank you. Michelle?
I neglected to do this last Monday, but I just want to thank again the Salisbury Fire Department for once again coming to our aid. We had a little incident where Nick had to go to the hospital, and once again, they showed up and en masse and were incredibly quick and professional and got us to the hospital quick, so I just want to thank them for all they do. They do an amazing job, we've got an amazing response team, so.
Thank you, Michelle. I would just like to add to what the mayor was talking about, because I was on the council back then, and because of the redistricting, actually, two of us sitting on the council ended up running against each other because of the combined districts. And I will say that when we voted on it, it was unanimous, which shows, I think, the way that the council should approach things. And we knew one of us was not going to be here after the election, and I was lucky enough to win, but Mr. Spees was a good councilman and did what a good councilman does. And I remember that, and I appreciate that. Please give blood if you can. Everybody be safe, and it is wonderful to be back face-to-face. Ms. Glanz?
One other thing came to mind as you were thanking our fire department on Friday, I think at 6:00. We are welcoming in 12 new firefighters and promoting 12 firefighters to other positions. So we're really excited to welcome them to the team and get to celebrate. They are starting Week 2 of their orientation and onboarding, and I think they were at MIFRE today doing a burn, so they are getting well-seasoned with us, so.
Yeah, they'll have, they'll be, they'll be coughing a little for a couple days, so.
Can you someone being jacked too?
Sure. Press your button.
I would like to say we were talking about redistricting, and my father was one of the ones I can remember who, well, I don't want to say this, but sued the city to redistrict the area so we could get a minority person on the council. So, you know, that's a lot to, to have to endure, but if this is what we have to do to keep people in place and position and be fair, I agree with it.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into the special meeting, I'll call the meeting to order. I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
Second.
Okay, I'll give it to Ms. Jackson.
No, he did it. Me about it. I just said second.
It was, okay, I'll give it to Mr. Boda. Mr. Boda, seconded by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The legislative agenda is approved by a vote of four to zero. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2714 for the first reading.
Some of, second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Bosch, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
See, you have to walk now instead of just hitting the button.
This is ordinance number 2714, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury establishing a special revenue fund to be known as OSP fund for the purpose of accounting for opioid settlement proceeds received from the state of Maryland. Whereas the national settlement agreements arising from lawsuits filed against three major opioid distributors and manufacturer, Johnson &amp; Johnson, provide for each state to receive a specified share of the overall opioid settlement proceeds. And whereas the state of Maryland and its local governments, including the city of Salisbury, negotiated and entered into a separate state subdivision agreement to address the allocation of the opioid settlement proceeds throughout the state of Maryland. And whereas the state subdivision agreement allocates opioid settlement proceeds directly and indirectly through grant opportunities to the city of Salisbury. And whereas the national settlement agreements and the state subdivision agreement require that all opioid settlement proceeds, OSP, are to be utilized for opioid abatement purposes only. And whereas the city of Salisbury is required to establish a separate fund in order to ensure such OSP revenues and expenditures are accounted for separate from other city activities. And whereas in order to receive and remain qualified to receive opioid settlement proceeds, all funds deposited in the OSP fund will have a corresponding automatic appropriation of an equivalent amount for opioid abatement purposes. And whereas this fund, separate fund, shall be called the OSP fund. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury and Maryland as follows. Section 1, an OSP fund shall be established for the purpose of receiving the city's share of opioid settlement proceeds from the state of Maryland and accounting for expenditures of such proceeds in accordance with the national opioid settlement agreements and the corresponding state subdivision agreement. Section 2, the OSP fund shall be only expended for opioid abatement purposes as permitted by the aforementioned agreements and shall not be withdrawn or otherwise applied for any other purpose.
Thank you, Ms. Bosch. Questions from the council? None? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2714 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2714 for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. Since there are no other items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.